All right, I would like to call this regular work of Columbia Board of Selectment order Tuesday, July 19th, 2022. First, I have to read the rules of conduct for a high virtual meeting is in person and virtual in video and audio recording. Everybody of the members here, if you are on through virtual, and you would like to make a comment, raise your hand, go put something in the chat, try and make yourself noticed and we'll call on you. And if you make a disruption, whether you're here or online, you may be asked to leave by staff or the first appointment. And if you have something to say tonight and you are not on the board, please give us your name and address when you start. Thank you. Please rise with pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, approval of the agenda.
I have a motion as far as the agenda, I wanted to add. By 9.2 appointments and reservations, I wanted to add the appointment of Brandon McLean to the Economic Development Committee as well as the Columbia Conservation Agricultural Committee.
Can we repeat that in the same sentence?
Yeah, because he's already been joining the council yet.
Any comments? Thank you. So I make a motion, you make a motion, I'm sorry, all those in favor of adding Brandon to the Economic Development Committee? We're putting up an agenda. Okay, and then since we're adding, I'm going to also add our appointments and resignations. 9.7 for Tristan Chandler to be added to the position of highway maintainer for the town of Columbia full-time positions. My votes in favor? Okay. So I move to accept the Board's recommended agenda with the additions. And I guess a correction. In 9.4, 9.5, and 9.6, it should read Planning and Zoning Commission, not Planning and Zoning Committee. So all votes in favor? Both, thank you. I move to approve the Board's second regular meeting minutes for June 21st, 2022. Any discussion? All votes in favor? Both, thank you. Audience, citizen, or anything that's not on the agenda? Excellent, thank you. Seeing none, anybody in the chat? No, seeing none, remove our whole business, Sustainable CT. So this is a program about three years ago when we were buying for economic and just making Connecticut more sustainable for people who want to stay here, people who live here, just kind of everything to be able to do things in your town, in your cities, to make Connecticut a place where you want to continue to reside. So Mark, I guess they're bringing it kind of with COVID, everything stopped.
It took a few years. Happy to fire it back up again. 66 towns have actually certified to start the program. We have now some interns, two interns are helping us on UConn, which would be great.
UConn.
UConn. And then we're going to start advertising again, telling the town that we're firing that up again. We're going to be looking for some project leaders. We actually need someone to help be a town volunteer to be the face of sustainable Connecticut to Columbia. So we're looking for that volunteer. And we need some support from the Board's. Let's have Lisa wants to lead the charge.
So we have points already, is that?
Yes, what we have to do is these interns will help us document everything we've already done. We have to enter into a giant sustainable database, which takes time, which we have had.
So I have a point. So the thing we did was recycle plastic bags at the dump to get a bench. And as soon as it was over, the recycling went away, and I have no idea if we ever got a bench. But why is my question? Just to feel good and we do all these kinds of things, but it's not, it's just these little feel-good programs to go, oh, we did that. And it's like, if it doesn't mean anything.
It's not sustainable?
It's not sustainable.
It's not sustainable?
I just, I have an issue with all these kinds of programs that it's, it's just, I make the signs for them, to be perfectly honest. My son does them, and I make them, and it's like, oh, for goodness sakes.
Not, not, I understand what you're saying, especially about that, but not all of the items that are in the Sustainable CT are one and done, or two and done. A lot of them are continuation.
I mean, why did we give up the recycling of plastic?
We didn't realize how big an ordeal it is to, once you collect all this plastic, to get rid of it. Because there's no place to take a dump truck of plastic. They say, yeah, bring one bag a day. So unless Jen and I want to bring a bag to Big Y every day, one bag, when we have 500 bags.
And it was 500 pounds, as I recall, where?
Right, there was a significant amount of plastic.
I have a lot of plastic bags.
We can't find anybody to recycle our acrylic.
It's a problem.
And the problem stems on that, because the regulations on the industries that will recycle plastics are so ridiculous, nobody does it.
Thank you for your comments. There's more than just a plastic bag.
I'm just, if we're going to do it, I would like to have an idea of what the program is, as opposed to, these are all real pretty, but they don't really tell you.
But we learned a lot around one, so I think we're smarter.
We can certainly share with you each one of the, there's different action items that we can show you and share with you all the things that you can do, all the steps that you can take. It's so much more involved than.
Well, because this is really big. This doesn't tell you anything.
It's just kind of putting something out there to let people know that we're looking for.
It's initiative, but it doesn't really tell you.
Right, so there's, but we can certainly share that, and we will be sharing that, so that you can see where all the steps that can be taken as a sustainable CT.
We will be getting more information for it. Do I have anything tonight? We're getting more information. We started this. But I appreciate you stepping up and taking charge.
You can find me in voice.
Yes, we recognize you, Antonia. Hi, Antonia, how are you?
Yeah, Antonia, hello, three, thank you. I was in thought in this before COVID, I was on committee. And we, I have heard the Director of the State Program speak several times at different conferences. And there's much more to this program and it's sustainable. Each action that you choose to do in different categories is something that is, as they said, not one and done. And I think that your comments are a little premature when you know more about the program. And I would suggest that that we ask the Sustainable CT to send some, to re-explain it to us. Because it's sort of like we're entering this for the first time, because it's been four years since we actually had an active committee working on this. So, and I think you'll find, Lisa, that we are already doing quite a few things. And that won't be a superficial kind of painting thing. That Columbia is already, we're a bunch of cheap people, and the first environmentalist is cheating.
We have an answer for her? In the chat?
Yes, I mean, in the chat, there's requests to record the meeting, but I just typed back that the meeting is being recorded.
So more to follow on Sustainable CT. I remember that Columbia, for many of the years, and correct, we had 50, 60, 75% done just by raising the winds in the morning and going out to collect eggs and the dead. We already do so many of it. So, thank you. Any other comments? Columbia Volunteer Fire Department, 75th anniversary of that review. So we have a couple of guests here tonight to tell us all about it and how we are ready to walk. Chief?
Steve, it's time to be Fire Chief, 44 Egerton Road. So as you have probably all seen, kind of going by the firehouse, this year is our 75th anniversary. First, providing private service to the town and the citizens. Pretty big milestone for those that were around, the 50th was a pretty big deal. Actually, in the field where our current firehouse is now, we're looking to do something similar to that. We have the date of October 1st, it's a Saturday, from 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Already started to focus on social media, started an event page, trying to get a little bit of an idea of numbers for people that want to, that are going to show up or come out, and open to the entire community, surrounding community, come by and check it out. It's more of an open house style. Come look at the trucks over at the firehouse. Talk to members of the fire department again about what we do, how we can possibly get involved. And also, we have some events for kids, bounce house, of course, we have a dump tank that maybe some of you lovely dignitaries could possibly want here.
In October?
It'd be a little warm.
We got hot water.
The first five people would never. Also got a DJ, we have a live band scheduled for the evening. We also have a beer and wine garden that we're looking to do. We have we have it scheduled with Mike that owns the Columbia Package Store. And then we also are going to have some food trucks that I know you guys already discussed in a previous meeting, loan exemption, which again, I thank you for. Still, if you don't know or are aware about the food trucks, they still have to pull their own permit for the day with Eastern Highlands. They will take care of all that. So we still be covered in that aspect. And then also with the beer and wine garden is the package store pulls again another one-day permit. There's a fee that we'd be paying for that they're responsible for distribution and the IDing and all that stuff. And it'll be in an area. We have gone through green lanes again to kind of to plan and think of all other things. Talked to the school already, because parking will be over there. We have state police that will be directing traffic right at the crosswalk area, across from from the firehouse where people will be. We have gotten lighting for the night event. And then we also have a standby ambulance out of Manchester that will be covering the rest of the town for emergencies and then our surrounding utility departments will be called for emergency. So we have that covered. Of course, able to porter johns and that kind of stuff. But again, another, it's a great event. Again, open up, open to the community by as many as we can.
So Chief, what can, what else can the town do for you?
We're also going to assist. We're looking, I know as a conversation that we had before with the town, about if there's any funds available to assist with this, we've raised about $20,000 right now to put towards this. Obviously, like with prices, things are creeping off, so.
How much more do you need?
We were looking at like, around 3,000 to 5,000. We have a nice partnership we just got with Gates. He committed to 3,000 to 5,000 also, and they are also going to be pushing, taking a week out of their TV time to promote the event and then also on their social media. So they helped out tremendously, a big asset for that.
So, two things. I'm concerned about the, not the social media, but like with Gates and the surrounding towns, hey, come on down to Columbia for our 75th, we're proud of you. This is, we're proud of you, man. We couldn't do this without you guys. But my goodness, to have every surrounding town and people coming down and just be prepared for an overload. You know, it sounds like a great time, so be prepared for an overload. Yeah, you better have a plan.
Yeah, so we you've actually increased obviously the food trucks because, again, promoting the event, the interest. So we started to add more food trucks. Think about, about possibility, we have not really a rainy, but we have cover that we get tents and tables and chairs and all that stuff set up. Best we, best we can, fortunately, with New England and not going to the first, it could be a blizzard, a hurricane, or 90 degrees. So, or a microburst.
Or a microburst.
And then my other thing is I don't know about the other members of the board, but I think we could probably find some funding now, well.
What about security services?
Security services, this day and age, so many outside towns, I mean, back. What's your thoughts on that?
I would probably direct that first to Trooper Carley, to his recommendation.
At least probably three or four policemen, two on traffic and two.
Yeah, I don't know what they send for their traffic here. I think it's two. I think it would be two troopers that would be doing traffic, so at least we'll have that there.
I know the deep river muster was going on this last week, and that was six troopers in there.
I mean, we're not we're hoping for a big crowd, but like for the 50th, it was people in and out all day. Because I was around there for the 50th, because I've been in 30 years. So, traffic was sporadic at the nighttime when the band was playing, so when traffic picked up a little bit more. But for the most part, at any one time, there was probably no more than 300 people there. And it's all going to be, and we held that in July, so we're going in October. Just do a little start in the planning and trying to get everything coordinated. So don't expect, I don't expect there to be 5,000 people over there one time. I don't, I don't foresee it.
Is this also a fundraiser?
No, this is a.
Pardon?
Yeah, it's a thank you and a celebration of loss and a celebration. People do pay for the food, where?
Yeah, so food trucks are, we're not charging the food trucks a fee to set up here. We're saying, charge what you want, and that is your profit, say, for however long you want. Again, their question is how many people, because they don't want to look bad and be either under or over and then waste food or not have enough and look bad, so I understand that. Our perimeter, preliminary numbers are about 2,500 people, we're thinking would come through throughout the day. And the beer and wine, just to keep the cost down, is cash.
For a procedural question, if we're going to allocate money towards it, it's based upon a simple motion, everyone.
We have motion and request that we have to do a transfer.
Yeah, I would make the motion that we transfer 5,000 dollars, the appropriate fund to the celebration.
Okay, any discussion on motion, but anything else?
So, I'm okay with the dollar value, I guess, from my perspective, I think that maybe our piece should go towards maybe the security. You know, I would even more, I would think that might be from the town perspective.
Right now, the state police, it's part of our subscription as a town, so they have to provide it. We are not paying for that right now.
So there's no charge?
Yeah, for right now, for the, I bet you if you wanted more, that would be a profit. It goes to, the way I was explaining it, is it goes to a direct first, as first writer refused, being the resident trooper. He would take that and have a day off later on down the road or something. And if he doesn't want it, then it would go outside the surround, but that's how it was for them.
Anything else?
No.
I know you use the money wisely, and you do the very best you can, and I would like to, as we get closer, as the feel of the event starts to unfold, I'd like to sit down again. It can be an update to us, or it can be on a phone call or work it out, but stay in touch with us, because I do also have concerns about security. I'm sorry to say, this day and age, I have concerns about security. The area for the alcohol will be, I'm sure, roped off and stuff, so, you know, I've seen it in Glastonbury, they had it on the town green. But that's, that's the end of my discussion. Anybody else? All those in favor of allowing $5,000 to the 75th Columbia Volunteer Fire Department Celebration? All right, opposed? All right.
Thank you. Also, November 12th, just keeping your guys' calendar, is our banquet. So all of you will be invited to that, that's a very expensive. Six to 10.
What's that costing me?
$5,000.
Oh, yeah. Thank you, yeah.
Yes, just, it's not on the, it's not in our, on the agenda in the town administrator's report. We're going to talk about the Emergency Operations Center. It's not input or anything else. I'm just going to talk about what I saw and how well it went. So you're welcome to stay, or you don't have to, I just wanted to open up. All right. I'll sweep that here. Next is the closeout of the American Relief Fund project. I just found your money. All right, we have spent nearly all of our first half of the American Relief Fund. That was a lot of voted on and spent, and everything's going very well. We have some money of the first allotment left over. And we are just going to move that to the timing of the second allotment, right?
Yes.
About $6,000, $8,677.
$8,677.
So I move to approve the closeout of the list of American Relief Funds projects completed and return the balances remaining to the American Relief Fund balance as presented. Worry, but we're just giving it back and putting it into the American Relief Fund account of ours. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Fourth of July Parade Committee. In the back, we have a gentleman from the Lions Club, and I wanted to, I put this on here. I've seen the parade for decades. Been part of the parade for two decades now, and love doing it and what it represents and what it brings to the town of Columbia. I know that sometimes, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think you have the same chair, or maybe you do, you have the same chair for two years in a row, but you generally pass the responsibility down the line every now and then. And I guess what I'm looking for is how can the town assist in helping you deliver the best parade that we can?
Jim Blair, 17th Columbia Landing, Columbia Lions. So, as our committee is comprised, we have five members. And each member has been a chairman of the parade. So we have, it's rotated through those, we're not bringing newbies and throwing them into the pond. So we've all done it, we've all had experience. Everybody's got the same, you know, Excel sheets that we're working from and the same list. So we're duplicating our processes the same every year. The things that we could look to for some help would be, generally, I think it's going to be advertising, because some of the concerns that, you know, we had, you know, we brought up and talked about, you know, we're going to have a meeting at the end of this month as a parade may kind of close out, you know, the year, and let's get going on the next one. Is that, yeah, we had a lack of floats, you know, participation, there's been, throughout the years, I won't read all the names, but there was organizations in town that used to have floats, you could count on them. I've been doing it since 98, personally, Wes has been doing it since he was a kid, and and those have, we've lost too, so probably between that and the performers, we have the funsters that come out of Newington, they're part of Shiner's. Attrition, there are members who retired, passed away, don't have a way to get the vehicle out here. So we've lost a lot of those little things and sort of, you know, get 5,000 night cuts. So you just, we have to now look at ways to improve that, and the committee is looking at that already. Where typically for, just in the float, we're just addressing the float aspect of it. We typically have offered cash prizes for different categories for floats, so we have a theme every year. We represent the theme, you're going to be judged on that, we bring independent judges in, we have a float too. And they, you know, the judges judge it and award the prizes. We're looking at increasing the advertising and advertising more aggressively earlier to get, you know, maybe some citizens. Because the groups, the volunteer groups in town, or churches and so forth, that don't do it. Maybe there's members there that we need to reach somehow who would like to be in the parade with a float. But because their organization dropped out, they didn't have the means to do it. So we're going to, we're going to try to really, you know, shape the trees as well and be more aggressive with that advertising. Jen's been extremely helpful the last couple of years. I mean, she's a great resource for us already. And utilizing the town website, utilizing the town Facebook page, everything Columbia or our electronic stuff. What we're going to do also is step up our advertising. So the view comes out, I believe, with publications February and May. So the view comes out, uh, I believe the publication is February and May, and we would advertise in both of those. You know, again, uh, the aggressive nature of looking for people to commit or make some type, you know, get it out there so people know what's going on. So there's not a, you know, like, hey, what's up with the Fourth of July parade? You know, no, we're, we're gonna get it word out earlier as best as possible. And that's, that's now when we're trying to get floats uh, and town participation. Now the bands, uh, the same thing, we're gonna be more aggressive. We had uh, last year, I think we did really well. Uh, you know, it was first thing post COVID, you know, and actually still whatever. And everybody was excited. Uh, I personally contacted every one of those groups that we had dealt with in the past. There was only a couple of three that didn't make it last year in twenty one. And then this year now it's, it's they've had other opportunities, you know, they were, we were the only game maybe last year or the first ones that approached them. So they were excited and we got a lot of good response and a lot of participation. And this year they had other options. So we, two bands in particular chose to do a competition. So uh, right now we're looking, I've already uh, got a verbal commitment on a drum line. So we're adding a new band next year with another possible line on that and uh, to, to add to that. And then the bands that we normally have used in the past, they're gonna get their invites and contracts in the fall. We're gonna be again uh, in advance. We need commitments early and speaking of the twenty twenty six parade specifically, we're also gonna get the contracts for that. And we're going to uh, try to secure the bands we've worked with in the past. While at the same time, uh, we're gonna look for more because we can't necessarily count on every group repeating and being with us every year.
Does the Lions Club need help from, I mean, would it, would, if you were pointing, it's your parade, we get it. I'm just asking if we, the town advertised for a Fourth of July Parade Committee. Is that something to help with phone calls or doing research or trying to drum up, you know? Jim, give me a holler. I'll, I'll go down and knock on a couple of businesses and say, listen, I need a float from you this year. Come on. You know, but my question is a committee, would it help? Would it just, you know, would it be help or too many cooks in the kitchen?
Let me just interject here. What, what's burning? I actually live eleven sixty seven Gates Road, but uh, I'm a Columbia native and been in the club before. As long as the club's been in existence essentially. So uh, you know, I, I've grown up with the parade, I've seen it evolve. Uh, to answer your question directly, uh, yeah, I, I think there is a place for having assistance, more assistance from the town relative to support, not just monetarily. Uh, as you mentioned, we are going to be having a recap meeting later this month. Uh, I think we'd like to have the, when we come back after we have our recap meeting with some ideas of where uh, we feel the town could give us that type of support in addition to monetarily. Now whether that would uh, mean a committee, I don't know. Uh, or you know, it may be as simple as just a uh, a listing of certain activities. How do you go about accomplishing that? You know, if you want a former committee, fine. If you just wanna assign it to certain individuals, that's fine too. But you know, I certainly, from my perspective, I can see where that type of support would help our club immensely. Uh, you know, I was gonna give you a kind of a smart out answer by saying that the Lions are always looking for new members.
Yeah.
So you know, if you have somebody that's willing to be on the committee, you know, send them on over.
They will be a lion.
Yeah, uh, you know, but in all seriousness, you know, we realize that not everyone chooses to make the commitment to join the club, but may want to support our activities in greater uh, in a greater way. So yeah, there may be a uh, scenario where we could, you know, work in a, in tandem with a committee or certain individuals. Uh, but what we would like is the opportunity to brainstorm it with our committee at our wrap up meeting and come back to you to a, a future meeting with some ideas.
Perfect. Alright, please.
And I, in my ignorance, do you do Little League? Do you invite Little Leagues and stuff to come in?
Um, they've been invited a couple of times and last year, uh, what happened was that they committed and I tried to get a final commitment and then Steve Perro was working with it. He said there was nobody available to marching with kids or they just didn't wanna do it. So there's, there's a lot of groups that are kind of like that on the list. Because we're just, I've been the chairman now, you know, a couple, three times and uh, you look at the list and I, and again, since ninety eight. Some of those folks on that list, no, I've never seen them. And then the point of contact has fallen. It has changed. So like, you know, so for instance, uh, Columbia Wyndham Soccer. And Sebby Randazzo, Sebby's a Columbia citizen and his kids were in soccer and, you know, typical, you know, I mean, I had a kid in Little League, so oh yeah, there's a little, you know, whatever is going on, you know, we'll do it. But once you're out of that group. So now, now it's changed. And so you gotta get commitments from those new folks or you gotta fund them.
Sure.
And the other thing that we found with some of these groups is, you know, not getting too far into the weeds, but it's just it's volunteer organizations, they do a lot during the year. And they don't necessarily wanna take the Fourth of July and walk down the street. They'd rather watch the parade. And so that seems to, you know, and I think a lot of organizations have that issue. It's not just one or the other. Uh, um, and so, and I don't, I'm not judging anybody. I totally understand it. But that's the feedback that we get. And so, yeah, there they may not have gotten their written invitation this year, but um, we also you know, we're here. It's, it's, it is, you know.
Actually, I, I spoke to Steve this afternoon. Uh, and what he said is that the Little League, for some reason, this year they, they got together with Lebanon and wound up doing the Memorial Day Ring of Lebanon. So we kind of got shuffled into the rubble, so to speak. So unfortunately, we didn't have an entry this year.
And that, that's.
They will be invited next year.
They'll be invited, yeah. So that's, and that speaks to um, you know, we're talking about bands. So you know, high school marching band.
That in July.
Which we have had in the past, you know, as I said, I, I grew up with the parade, the first parade was nineteen sixty two, and we used to have high school bands. I spent a lot of support.
Can't get ice.
We used to have a flyover from the National Guard. There were a lot of things that we used to have that have depended on by the wayside. So it's, you know, that, and again, that may be an area where the town can, you know.
I'm already working on it. So. I mean, they fly over a lot of places on the same day, okay? So.
Yeah.
Again, not, not just, we did have a number of groups that committed that didn't show, uh, you know, Governor's would try to be one of them. They were supposed to have been here and they, they didn't show, so.
The governor was playing at the zoo. That's the governor's band, just kidding. No? Okay. We had plenty of people moving along. Alright, gentlemen, so get back to us, come and see us again. Call in, get on the agenda, we'd love to hear you come on.
Sure.
Thanks. Uh, request for memorial bench for Kenneth Enzo Gudrow at the Columbia Rec Park up on uh, Nutley Hill Trail. So there's been a request by friends and family. So I moved to approve the request for memorial bench for Kenneth Enzo Gudrow at Columbia Rec Park on the Nutley Hill Trail as presented. Is that here?
Yes.
So where, where is it? It's in the woods.
It's, it's right when we start the Nutley Hill Trail at the new park lot we made, we started in there and there is a bench um, already that they're going to duplicate uh, for Richard Perrin Ryan. Uh, and they have a map showing exactly the relationship to the things that they like to copy. And they have, it's just a little further down.
It's a stone.
Stone trail. It is nice. The problem is, uh, you know, the one there that's for Mr. Perrin already, somebody scratched the brass, the brass.
Oh.
Okay.
Scratch.
The, the brass. One shot of floor. All those in favor for the bench?
Thank you. That's very nice.
Columbia Lake, an application for the police property for a water fourteen Lakeview Park West. Reading this, I moved to approve the application for a watercraft lift, fourteen Lakeview Park West for my police contingent upon recommendation conditions set forth by L M. So Elmac went out to look, it's not peeing on the water, so it doesn't fall within the timeframe. And Elmac has approved this, so any discussion here? Okay, if you keep me honest, Jen. Pointings and resignations, the appointment of Wendy Savino to animal control officer. I moved to appoint Wendy Savino as animal control officer for the town of Columbia. In our partnership, where I'm going with, uh, we're putting forth with Hebron, she will be an employee of Columbia's Animal Control. Work with Columbia and Hebron so we can have overlapping and more extended coverage. Wendy will be our animal control officer for the town of Columbia.
No. She's either East Hampton or Marlborough. I believe. Do you know, Jen? But um, what they're covering is both, they're, they're not covering Hebron yet. We're working on a mutual agreement right now. They'll be covering Columbia. And they've been doing a great job, you know, on all the calls. So she's on the night shift. So the day shift is covered by Michael Zaki. And night shift is covered by four part-time animal control officers that are on call if need.
Are they employees of ours or is this a contract?
They're employees of Columbia, but when we do a mutual agreement with.
So how many animal control?
So right now there are employees. But we have an agreement with East Hampton and East Haddon, because they're also covering East Haddon and East Hampton. And we are using the East Haddon vehicle. Hebron is in the process of buying the vehicle through the state surplus. Uh, but unfortunately, the state is very unresponsive. It's hard to hit the vehicle. Um, so luckily, we're still being supported by East Haddon and the employees that we're employing are covering Columbia. They feel they can cover Hebron as well. And that is with the lawyer right now putting together a mutual aid agreement between Hebron and Columbia.
So we have somebody during the day and then this person will be at night.
That'd be one of our, we have four part-time employees that trade off on what nights they cover.
So are they, are the four gonna be employees of Columbia?
Yes.
And they're each gonna get that stipend?
They only get the stipend if they cover a shift. So we get a whole calendar of the month. And the names are written as who covered what shift and we pay them.
And they will cover the shift between, when, when the deal, the mutual aid deal is done, they'll be covering the shift between Hebron and Columbia.
Correct. Right now it's just Columbia.
So it's really just, I don't know, evening, nighttime, just?
Well, Michael Zaki is day unless he needs someone else to cover. And these four trade off covering nights.
Who's covering the nights?
Well, it's, it's the legalese.
Okay.
So there's somebody always.
Out of the five officers, all shifts are covered.
So we're gonna have five employees?
Four part-time and one full.
So how many hours are the part-time weeks?
It's, 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 you're not really, you're only working if you call. So you get a stipend if you're on call.
Okay, I was gonna say, so they do get some compensation.
It's a compensation if you take a shift, which means you have to be prepared for it.
So then if you get a call, then you get more money.
No, no. You get a stipend so that you're not somewhere at a concert and you have to be available to go on the call.
Right.
So that's why you have more than one employee.
And if there's an emergency, they have to be coming, where do all these people live?
They're all in this area.
Well, East Haddon is what half our.
None of them live in East Haddon.
I'm just curious.
I think it's East Hampton, Marlborough. And one might be Colchester.
Okay, so you're talking fifteen.
Right, and most animal control calls. The control officers usually beats us if we're gonna go out and see what's going on. But Mike has been that one poor woman that got attacked by, we'll think a coyote.
Coyote.
Right. Michael Zaki was there doing a canvassing in the neighborhood. Right. It is working and we're, we're not getting any complaints. All calls being here.
And if it's a raccoon or something, that's supposed to be a stink least thing anyways.
No, Mike, um, he, he executes the raccoons at the rally and then takes them in.
Well, that might be, you need faster than twenty minutes, right?
He, he.
I'm just, I, I'm just saying, because I, I had one at the, when I had my nurse three years ago and I had a state cop there in five minutes and he shot him right.
But the state police are there for that.
They can't get here quickly, that should be. You don't want them moving. You want them actually taken care of.
Correct.
How about bears?
Any other?
Who does care about bears?
Uh, the.
The lions and tigers.
The, the guys that'll tell you.
Right? You know who else likes fur cats?
We have to live with our critters.
Any other further discussion? Bears and bears.
I know.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Write a book on this, honestly. Presentation, okay, no, we're not there yet. Alright, uh, we need, uh, we have a volunteer who'd like to join the Columbia Agricultural Commission and the Economic Development Committee. So I moved to appoint Brandon McLean to the Columbia Agricultural Commission and the Economic Development Committee, Commission, Commission, Commission. Any discussion? Who knows, Brandon?
Hello.
Who's that masked man? How are you?
Can't, can't complain. I, I'm Brandon McLean. I live on fifty six, like fifty four and a half. We got a, what's called, address change, fifty four and a half is sixty six. Uh, I'm a UConn student. I have, I'm currently a biology major. Uh, but I have pretty extensive experience within municipalities and also within financial management. And uh, yeah, I can answer any other kinds of questions you guys may have, if there's any.
Very good. So, uh, you know, I did the biology, you're, I'm sorry, are you also taking business courses or what?
I don't know. I just have, my previous job was actually, I managed the finances of three, or two businesses and one individual's payments finances. That was my old job. So that's where the economic familiarity with business and uh, financing stuff.
So when are you graduate?
Uh, next semester.
Next semester.
COVID came around and checking stuff.
Yeah. That's cool.
One shot of floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All over the post, last shot, Brandon. Thank you for stepping up.
Thank you.
Uh, I'm going to announce the resignation of Joe Swenson, accounting specialist. Joe is leaving us for a permanent full-time position elsewhere. Also, the resignation of Alex Bothell from the Planning and Zoning Committee. So those are just for our knowledge. But in saying with one going out, one has stepped up. And uh, Walt Table, who used to be on Planning and Zoning, is volunteering to come back. So Walt is an alternate now, I believe. And so as he comes, if we decide to put him on Planning and Zoning in a full-time capacity, then he will open up a vacancy and Don Schofield would like to be the alternate member. So in saying that, I move to accept the resignation of Alex Bothell as the regular member of the Planning and Zoning Commission and appoint Walter Table as a regular member of the Planning and Zoning Commission to fill the vacancy. I also, as well as appoint Don Schofield as an alternate member of the Planning and Zoning. I also, as well as appoint Don Schofield as an alternate member of the Planning and Zoning Commission to fill the vacancy of Walt Table, should he be? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And, uh, we have Tristan, which is the?
Tristan.
Tristan, you know Tristan, if you've been to the transfer station, he's the young man down there.
Oh, one of the nice guys.
Yeah, well, there's two nice, nice guys down there, one of them is Tristan and the other one is Johnny Cirillo. Tristan's dark haired, long flowing dark hair and usually working a lot with machinery down there. Tristan's been with, working with us all summer long in a full-time position with a couple of people who have less employment. And we'd like to make it official to bring, make it official for a full-time employment. So I make a motion that we accept the hiring of the, of Tristan Candelin for the highway maintainer position for the town of Columbia. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Our administrative report.
Um, why don't we start off right away with the EOC follow-up meeting, we had that microburst to hit all sudden Wednesday. Uh, Roger Hearn, that one called me saying, you don't have to believe this, but there's a lot of trees down in Columbia. And, uh, it, uh, we worked through the day, through the night. And following the full day, Public Works was spectacular, I want to commend them. Uh, they, they kept this, a lot of trees got pushed off the roads, EverSource was killing power, allowing us to clear. And unfortunately, a lot of the residents just didn't understand how intense that storm was. And, uh, we started later, something got out of power, uh, then by the next day we were down to a hundred. And then Stephen, uh, was at the EOC with Beth and Jared James and the fire department, it hit so quick. They were all out trying to fear what was going on in the town, driving around, reporting back. And our liaison from EverSource came down and I'll let you take it from here, Steve.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll talk about the, uh, the events. Okay, got a call from Mark, boom. Uh, recommend opening emergency operations center, cover the fire. Wonderful. That's almost put back out. And, uh, but it was good, we went up there and with some of the things we had put forth and changes six months ago, actually it was nice to pull out a large street map of the town of Columbia and we started getting reports on down wires and passable roads, detoured, deleted, you know, things like that. And it was nice to be able to see coordinated there, to be able to coordinate with the fire department and rescue, should we need them to coordinate with the Department of Public Works when we were able to put them out, to deploy them, to clear roads, to help and assist with EverSource. And like, uh, Mark said, some of the people worked through the night, which actually, almost some people would say it was a long time that they were out without power. It was a day, twenty-four hours, but it would have been longer if we didn't work with EverSource and do the, now. Coordination, the operation command center there. It was good, it needs to be better, we had a meeting today in a hot wash-up with EverSource, our department, our public works, uh, our liaison from EverSource, we went over some things to make it better. I, you know, this was a, uh, a twenty-minute storm that left a lot of people without power, left us.
It was awful, that was crazy.
But the bottom line is, um, we got things up and running, coordinated and it was, it was good. I mean, I thought grading and exercise would have been about eighty-five. We all have things to work on, it was the first time we, we did this in the not-so-exercise way. So I almost called a couple of the selectmen to say, you want to look at this, come up. Because if we have a storm like Ayesha or we had years ago and power was out for seven to ten days, back-to-back October, then again in November. The Operation Command Center may be up and running for a long time and I'll be there on shift, Jared James, if he's not in Florida, will be there on shift. And there's going to be need, need for people to maybe commit for a shift, man the clock and man the radios and work with EverSource and make decisions.
Absolutely.
So.
If I had realized you were there.
Yeah, yeah, it, uh, EverSource has offered to do a couple of drills with us.
Training.
A, once again, a quick storm response training and then a long time storm response and how we can work together and you know, today we figured out our computers that EverSource gives us the programs don't actually really let us see what we need to see, so they're like, oh, well, we'll have to work that out, train you and we'll have to get new programs to make the changes. So it's always good and, uh, I was really happy with the response of everybody in the town, the, everybody came in through Park of Public Works, who lived outside the area. A lot came in from her home miles away. The fire department was out and deployed on down wires, keeping people off it, traffic off it. And then when we came back and we reported what was going on to EverSource, we felt like we could direct them to priority positions to do the most, to get power back to the majority of the people. Really in a very organized, organized way, and yet we still have things to do, so we're going to be fine.
So, if there's a tree down in the building, do we as a town have some, so maybe didn't take any lines since across the road, do we have a, like EverSource should call certain phone number issues?
There's no lines now, we'll take it.
Yeah, but what if it's after hours?
We call in public works employees.
No, but how are you going to know? Say it's down a dead-end street, how does, how does a resident alert you, say?
Should there be no wires down?
Okay.
If it's in the road, it's a hazard and we have to get, or someone's going to crash.
All right, but that might be something to put in that smooth line, that if you have a tree down and then isn't going to be reported to EverSource, then just call nine-one-one, now let the fire.
Now, if it falls down a some yard and it's just laying there, that's there, but if it's in the street, it's not going to happen.
Well, that's a false down the yard, it did, my son's, EverSource came and took care of it. There was a wire that was down.
Cause it was a wire.
It was a wire, it was a live wire.
But yes, if you don't, don't mess around.
They took care of the branch, not the tree, right?
EverSource does have tree clearing capabilities. We have more.
We have bigger equipment.
And to speed things up, we will deploy our people in conjunction or in cooperation.
That's, that's just good to know.
Yeah, training would be good, but I'd be more than willing to help out.
Set up a drill or so we can.
I happened to be away that night.
Oh, was that Monopop? I had just come out of the woods with the dog and I'm standing at the boat launch and I hear and I'm looking at the trees just moving, the branches are just rocking on the ground, like, oh, I'm so glad I got out of the woods.
I never remember anything like this in Columbia, am I not?
They're not common, the cellar is literally just over Columbia.
However, and I was in the service for a long time, you know, let me tell you, we always had checklists. I don't care if you did it a thousand times, always a checklist. So even after that night, I get a text message from my wife that says, "Check Marine Patrol on the lake." Who would have thought? And Marine Patrol was having trouble getting back to the boathouse.
How did she, she just?
Our friend down there who lives next door, so tell Stephen, Marines having trouble. So I was like, okay, you know, and when I talked to the fire department the other night, I go, do we think of these things? No, we, we need checklists.
Yes, you do.
Pre-storm, during the storm, post. Always checklist, so little things we learn and, uh,
You might be hands-on, you know.
I am, it's, sounds like you handled it well.
Yeah, learned it well. Time is drawing you.
Your experience is kind of a.
Uh, so that's my take on the, on the storm we got tonight.
All right. Including your binders as well, progress report, you know, submitted before reports of the EOC status on things I'm working on. And also things that have been completed, actually it's quite a bit more than completed, but. But it's, um, it is coming well, Red Park, we had to move the Red Park celebration date because we were a little ambitious thinking we'd be done for the August.
We would have been done except for a clearance issue.
Right, so we moved it to October twenty-second.
So October is the month of the party.
Yeah.
You're going to pitch a sentence, do it the month of October, stay in Columbia.
So we'll, we'll get new, new advertising invites out. Between celebration, we get our October. And then, um, we're still, we're still battling geese. We were trying peppermint oil right now, we've called it, he's making peppermint oil, natural peppermint. I'll find out if that's.
It's still in the box.
I'll find out if that works and, uh, we just gave you the follow-up on our microbursts.
Have you tried water cannons?
Uh, no, I know animal control has, has loud popper, like explosion things that don't have, it's actually a comes out of a gun.
Like a blank?
Right, but it scares the geese.
We're trying. That's my, that's my bad idea, so they don't walk up on the beach, how's that going?
We're trying pepper oil first and then.
I see they have taken that peppermint oil under their wings and walked around.
Um, also just to keep the board informed, uh, we're having a, we're being challenged, I authorized a audible siren for the police boat, a problem they were having, it was donated to us by East Haddon. Uh, the problem Marine Patrol happens, they, they have a flicky light, a blue light. But they don't have the fastest boat on the lake, a lot of times people don't know that they'd like you to pull over because you're doing something wrong. So being able to give a little whoop-whoop or a siren is very helpful in Marine Patrol to get the attention of whoever they need to talk to. So I'll be bringing this to L Mac too for further discussion. And right now I have, uh, the president of L Mac, that was a great idea to have the audible. Uh, but I just wanted to let the board know that this is being reviewed. Uh, we will, with L Mac can see what they're, what they is and, uh, I'll bring that report. And then, um, I also gave you a list of all the grand list mil rates in the area around us. Most towns are in the thirties and it's good that we're in the, uh, group of towns that are in the twenties. I gave that for information only. And also, um, Anne Dunnick and I have been talking and have been working with our planner. We still have to put conservation easements on some of these properties that we purchased, the open space. Before COVID, we thought we would be making a plan with the state a lot quicker, put on hold. But originally, honor law, they thought it'd be better not to have restrictions because it'd be easier to create an all-inclusive Monopop State Park and just put the restrictions the state has on all their properties. But in case we never actually merge with the state and keep the property in our own hands, we should have some feeding restrictions on the property, so, uh, I'm working with Anne on that, with Paula and with our town attorney. And, you know, keep the board appraised as we get further, but Anne's going to make an official motion, you know, this makes me, that we want that to happen. And, uh.
What kind of restrictions are you talking about?
Um, that, you know, could not be used for commercial use, it could.
I, I have no new ideas, so.
We, we know that open space properties have restrictions like, um, that.
Columbia has, excuse me, Columbia has a template for a consultation restriction. And we've had this for many years. And what we do is we take the template and then you tweak it, you turn it to, uh, to fit to that particular driver.
What we'd like to do is complete the management plan, which Anne just has draft one, it will be reviewing the open space coming out thirty. Because what you don't want to do is restrict the use, let's say the Midbrook Reserve, we want to make that into a boy scout camping area, you might want to put some platforms down.
Correct. Part of a group camping.
But we don't know all uses that we want to have these properties designated for, we'd like, we don't want to put too severe restriction, we wouldn't allow something like that. We're not allowing any trauma. I know, um, if you look on the Connecticut River, there's places that this state has put outhouses, biological outhouses for the kayakers and camping.
The old-fashioned?
Yeah.
Pin twine?
They still make those, but you wouldn't want to restrict that if, if you want to make the camping. So just, those are just some things I throw out, we're, we're working with the state and, um, D P. That's all I have.
Yeah, on the October twenty-second, Historic Society is doing, uh, having this, November, having three people come in on that day. I wonder if we could complement it, you know, maybe you could do it later, this, ours is, I think the last one was twelve-thirty, it's at the, um, going to be at the town hall. Then we're having three, it's going to be pretty involved.
What is that again, what is?
It's, one is ID archaeological, uh, things, another is flinting and then we're going to have somebody come in to do what is it like to be a Native American back in the seventeen hundreds? So it's three pretty big events, uh, that are going to attract people. So I don't want to be the completer or it would be good to do it the same, they like have the thing at Red Park afterward. Talk about it to see.
You're starting at twelve-thirty?
No, it's, it's in the morning, this last one's twelve-thirty.
Oh, so you're starting in the morning?
Starting it in the morning, so I'll have to look at the schedule, I think, but I think that, I'll show you the poster.
I know our challenge, it can be easy to pick dates, but October twenty-second is the only day between Little League soccer season and all these conflicts.
Can you, Jen, you just kept that so we could put it on our town calendar?
Yeah, I think it's going to be a great event, John Hill's, she's got all these people, it's going to be great. But anyways, all we can talk about it and see how we can, I'm thinking compliment it, I'm not thinking of it to be.
Lot of correspondence here, uh, one of the things I want to bring up, Resident State Trooper Police Monthly Activity Report. I got a call from somebody or somebody calling me somewhere and I always say, if I don't know about it, I can't do anything about it. And he says, really, they need some help on Whitney Road, um, and Mark Road during Wednesdays and Saturdays for the transfer station route. Everybody goes like the dickens down there. So I asked Trooper DeCarly to do a couple of Wednesdays and maybe Saturday and first Wednesday, you bag something to everybody doing sixty-something miles an hour.
On Whitney Road?
On Whitney Road.
Wow.
So, you know what? And, and the worst thing was, I mean, we're not bad enough, but he had, you are doing this fast sign about a hundred yards up where he was stationed, so that you didn't know you were doing sixty-two, like you probably did because it was showing you sixty-two as it was flashing. So they didn't care, no regard whatsoever, so.
There's a lot of kids out there.
So if you're watching this, slow down.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, budget. Transfer, we have a lot of transfers. Move to approve the transfer story, twenty-one thousand three hundred and seventy-three dollars as presented, let's take a look at those. I think two of them are coming out of contingency where the rest are coming, are moving to garbage to the park, correct?
Good.
All right. So contingency, separation pay, the last one, seventy-five hundred dollars. When people leave, they get paid for on these vacation and sick time and they, they get true done, so that's seventy-five hundred dollars. And the other one was right there, nine hundred and twenty dollars contingency for repairs and maintenance. Vehicles break down sometimes unexpectedly, I just heard today that our transmission on our load loader just, just went out, so it was a body use, but.
Just started out, that's a key piece of work. No, this is our loader we use, we have an old one, all traces of main one.
So. You want to look into these and see if there are any questions on? Again, they are, we're almost done, there's going to be one more round. Again, they are, they're almost done. There's gonna be one more round of transfers to shore up the whole year. It's departments or department except for the contingency, the two of them. Any discussion? All those in favor of transfers? This is the one I have to sign. There are no refunds and move to approve the payment of bills in the amount of $544, $586, excuse me, $544,586.81 consisting of 2021 emergency, 2021 regular. Section of the library grant payment number 104 credit card paycheck.
I have one question. Was the billboard that fell over the one that's gonna have the baby thing?
No, it wasn't.
I know, it was that billboard.
It advertised into the ground.
The refund for Panda trip? I think it's a senior center, it's a senior center trip.
Oh, okay.
So you had to refund.
The grant to the fire department.
See a lot of things out here for the pavilion up there. Anybody, anybody been up there to see that?
Oh, it's great. I haven't been up there. What is the solar cameras for?
That's it. They're surrounding the pavilion on the corner, so we can see all of Rec Park. So there, we bought rings.
Okay, gotcha.
But we, we have a power and we're full solar.
We put the new doors on, it's not very special.
Okay, no, I.
It's okay. We're okay, but yes.
I have a question. So buying these rings and all that and the cyber all that you have, is there any concern with the, with the cyber controls in these aftermarket types of?
We're, we're doing visual, audio. And it transfers the image to our facilities, we can just phone, so he'll get an alert. And we can see if something. Not too far away, but he can always call police if we see something happening, treat the happening in Rec Park. But I don't know. I'll make sure our, our novice team looks. Set it up, yeah.
So the town green sign. Did the Lions pay for that or?
Yeah, we paid for it, but they're, we're sending them to the University.
Office of Lions, Lions.
Lions, I just wanted to be in charge of it until we're done.
Did you locate it as that? Anybody outside bills? All those in favor of paying bills? Close.
I just wanna get that out. Thank you, Jen, for, this is, we gave it, I thought this is the newsletter for July. A lot of great information. We just need more people down the side for this evening. So we have information in the newsletter, how to do all that.
Anybody who, I answer citizen. Saw a young man slip in the back there. Yes, sir.
Yeah, what is the town's position on the second pickleball court?
Uh, can I get your name and address, please?
Stan Roselstein, 21 Reddy Trail.
Yes, sir. We're, uh, it's been budgeted for two additional pickleball layouts to be done on the tennis side, side to side, not across the tennis court, but side to side. We've looked into what other towns have done and it actually has worked out. We've gotten great reports on that, so we're hoping to do that. Yeah, we have to redo the surface again?
Yeah.
The tennis court has to be resurfaced again, so nobody trips and stuff. Yeah, we're working on it.
So when do you expect that to be actually constructed? And if so, about when?
Sure, I have no idea.
It, it tend, getting, getting construction companies lined up and doing a major project, my guess would be, you won't see this till spring of next year. I, I think we'll miss the fall/winter seasons, we'll be pushed back by this.
Any other questions, sir?
No, there, there's a good, there's only four people per court when they play. Sometimes they can be eight, 10, 13 people show up.
I know, it's very common.
So it's, and there are mothers, there are seniors. So it's a great, it's a great health then, I think, for the town, the pickleball court.
How about disc golf? How you feel about that? That's coming up. No way.
Golf?
Disco.
Is that right?
All the way over on the park.
So, yeah, well, I'll try and kinda, we'll discuss with the rec director and the Department of Public Works, see if we can come up with some sort of schedule for the pickleball.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody on chat? No? If you don't, thank you. All right, so at this time, a board member comments.
Just briefly, which is mentioned earlier during the 4th of July grade discussion. I think, but I think it more of a town issue for, for us, I think we need to for at least for the order selectmen have the vehicle marked with town officials' eyes. So I don't assign to that in the past on that thing.
Oh, same.
Yeah, and I also think for Ed Mathis, I think it might be a good idea, in addition to having, driving the convertible there, there might be good to have a spotter like you do for a waterskiing type of situation where somebody can keep an eye, cuz he has to both drive and worry about us behind him. So I think it might be good in the future for safety purposes to, somebody spotting, helping stop rather than having. A poor person chasing.
He's the most nimble of all of us. That's true, Bill. I, I'll make sure.
It's a very good idea.
Very good. So at this time, I'm gonna suspend the board's selectman meeting and as we go into executive session. And I would ask that Mark stay behind. Other than that, thank you very much.
This will be for real estate.
At eight, was that 31? And back to resume the board's selectman meeting. And all those in favor of adjournment for the board's selectman meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Close.